And that key switch, I told you about it, but I've been prolonging it, so when I had time, I could get it fixed. Well, this morning, after getting the door fixed, the key wouldn't work. So we finally got it working and he ordered a part.
It's fixed.
It's all fixed? Okay, I didn't know. I had to get that fixed. Good, it's ready to go. My truck here. We had to bring it down.
The depth bump in the wiring harness.
Yeah, we should have a bill somewhere, you can get it.
Clark's?
No, right line, Charlie boys.
No, not here.
No, that's I can't explain it. I wouldn't get it.
Well, that should all been warranty. That's all part of the good warranty package, I believe it should have been.
That's what we're hoping.
That should.
So we just wait and see if we got the invoice or whatever.
Is this the second time?
I've had a Knox and Sarah and wiring harness issue before, but that's the first time for the deaf.
But it broke in the wire or something?
You went and picked it up.
Yeah, he didn't give me no, no slips or nothing. He handed me the keys, said it's all ready to go. I head home. Right, then we get that. Cover by Hamilton down there.
Water washed out the. Yeah, I walked over.
I couldn't get over to it today, it was bubbling up there. I did go down and Jimmy, we were on the backside with his daughter and he like got his boots on, he would put a stake out there. Then it turned down twenty four zero, so. Ain't nothing been done with it.
Where was the water coming from?
Was that out of the culvert there, goes across into the pond.
Is there a hole in the culvert?
Sounds like there's many.
Is that my backyard you're talking about?
Sounds like there was water just spraying out of the ground. When the pressure was.
But it's been an issue, is it ever did it there, is it ever did it there? You know, I told him, you're gonna have to get together with a flagboard, you're gonna have to come to a head here.
Well, Mark asked.
And it was a bong.
I was recycling and he came and got me.
I told you earlier.
Went over and looked at it and. I mean, that's quite a ways off from the road. I mean, it's, it's in the midst of all of the properties, so. My first re- reaction to it was, who put that there?
I was put there. It's annoying, I believe.
Did the homeowners put that in to make law or did? I mean, there's a.
I have no idea.
Up above.
Well, it comes all the way from town, gradually up there. Everything come down.
This is open ditch all the way.
Yeah, it's open ditch.
What's his name plug the culvert here a couple of years back?
Yeah, I got a piece of wood in there. Like guy, he's been out of grain in it, in the, in the, and we had to dig down to point of fall. And it took it in that fire in and the piece of wood couldn't get by, so it clogged it up.
So who buried the pipe? From there down through?
I have no idea. Well, the town did it.
The town did it?
McDonald's grandfather dug it.
There must have been an open ditch in there at one time.
It was, yeah. Kept flooding out the house and I was Pat Donald. Guy, he was working for dad. And he was nineteen years old. He's sixty nine now. So then fifty years. But there was a little hell shell back here somewhere.
There used to be a big, big house here, the old Doc Adams.
I remember the big house.
Very big house, sat out right close to the corner. And just below it, it was, it was such a big house that it had a little house down back. Millers lived there, I remember it was Millers. And they were caretakers for the big house way, way back, it was like a caretaker's house. And that was between Barry's house and this big one. And uh, when I think the house burned.
Uh, I don't know, I wasn't telling it that time.
But anyway, they tore it down and. And then it became a vacant lot and then Eastwoods bought it, put the garage and then a house.
But it kept getting flooded out, flooded out, flooded out every year.
The little house, the little house with the open ditch.
So they decided to put a culvert in there and it would, and it's limiting it, but I don't know where else to go.
But back then, the way everything was, you don't know if they hired the town to do it.
We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
And there's no record, so.
Get together with Shane or somebody and find a reliable for it or whatever.
It's outside of the, of the towns right away.
It is, it is, it's outside of the state highway.
Right, and that's what I was looking at is, we don't own the land. We have a right of way. So and the state has a right of way. So being that far outside of the right of way, it's like, who did this?
And as a rule, eh, the state doesn't, I know, and I don't believe the town would ever do. I mean, as a rule, we allow. An entrance to a driveway of certain length. You know, cause anything longer, it's just a hell of a lot more maintenance to thaw out if it freezes or do whatever, so you keep it within it. So, you know, we wouldn't ever.
I know.
Do something like that because of.
The two hundred feet?
The maintenance.
From what I can see in the hole, things that big around.
Yeah, it's big. Yeah, it's a big culvert.
Only, I think it's twenty four inch, either twenty four or thirty. Can tell by looking at this culvert over here, but.
Did you see the lake we had above Church Street? The culvert was frozen, that was a lake. With all that rain.
But again, they, you know, when they plow at the church, aren't they pushing it right over the end of that culvert and blocking that? Well, like combined with my snow machine, yeah, they looks like something, the groomer or something pushed it and it kind of.
I was gonna check after this.
Went into the ditch a little more.
I'm gonna check.
I didn't look in either, but I just assumed.
Ernie does something with his snow, he takes it all the year, I wonder if he's done with it over here. And I was gonna go look today and I was, I was busy, I didn't get there.
To put a culvert in that size all the way down to there, that's gonna be a lot of money.
Stay away from my greenhouse.
The one in there is a little. They put it in aluminum to the last many years. But you're only good for twenty years.
And again, we don't know.
And then if you do it now, you're gonna be doing it twenty years.
I mean, we gotta get, we got to, if the town was to fix it, you gotta give rights away.
It's like easement.
Easements to get on the people's property to do this, I mean, it's like.
It's quite a project, yeah. If you do it, do it right. You know, you just dig it and lay it away, you've got to clean up, you've got all the.
We should put it back to a brook. I mean, we would.
So what's that, you guys gotta, you gotta decide which, who's it is, who's it ain't.
Right, but we wouldn't have a culvert three hundred feet long.
No, it's.
That's impossible.
We have a problem with hooking on to them like Ernie did over here, you know, that's probably what caused it, I'm not saying, but you know, it's. You don't make them anything over forty feet, you can't saw them anyway, they'd be crazy.
You know, anything like that. They've gotta take responsibility for it, so taking responsibility is taking the cost.
Well, Ernie gave to me about that one, he said, we got a problem, no, I said, you got a problem. Cause he made it about fifty feet long, maybe longer.
Cause we don't do driveway culverts anymore. That's no different in my opinion.
It's not. But we can flood out the hell down there, turn it on, get sued, we, we gotta come to a head here.
Well, the flooding, the flooding.
It always happened, it's always happened.
Back of the water is the pond. And the pond's full. And the pond was full of water, and once that happens, it used to be a hell of a lot worse. Years ago.
I know.
Even with an open ditch, because that would be just a pond down there, right up into the road.
I remember that.
But we had a dam there before.
Right, and that's the thing. And it, and it was holding the water back and anything. I'm assuming it was an open ditch then, but I remember that being a whole pond right out into the road.
But you did too, that knocking down out there.
But I don't think that's gonna cure it because the pond is filled in. And if those ditches aren't kept open, to keep those open, which the last time the state come in and cleaned the end of their culvert, made it better. You went in and opened the beaver dam. And then they cleaned the end of the culvert.
This water that was getting around Cor's house. I don't know, water or zoo, but Jim's ex was. The state's DI was taking it, that saved that house from getting flooded this one, thankfully. But it weren't missing going in a window by just a little bit. And the state's DI was taking it and handling it well.
But there was a lot of water too.
There was.
But this pipe goes right into that DI, right?
Supposedly not.
No, it crossed the road and goes into pond, got a DI over there. That, that DI there comes across the road. And this one hooks into that one. And this one on the sidewalk here on this side.
I thought this pipe that went down hooked into that DI. It crosses the road itself.
The road itself, and this one here. The one that the state made change, it comes all the way from East and Avenue. Comes all, all the way over.
So are those pipes side by side down there, the DI pipe and the other one?
Oh, one on one side, the old town grid, one on the other.
There's several pipes down there, it's almost.
There's, there's, there's no way that uh, private individuals would have dug across the road and put a pipe in.
No.
Town, town, state had to be involved or somebody.
And bad, I don't remember.
Oh, I wasn't, I didn't.
Back when it was dirt, you'd do anything you want.
Well, there might have been an existing state culvert and they just hooked the pipe to it.
And that's what Tim did.
Should be some plan somewhere that shows that.
Shane's been there, looked at it before.
But there, there's gonna be a headache for we get down.
Well, there was ice floating across the road, right way in, in Johnson. So having that walk, it was just, there was problems.
It's been, it's been a long time since I seen that amount of water going over the dam. So I, I check that, you know, that. Wow, it was going over there, it was like a, it was like that big one doing Cambridge. So the water would just go on.
Well, I tell you, you know, you've got some water, when that culvert down by Scott's house is full. And it's shooting out the other end about thirty feet from here, you know, you've got some water. And I've seen it. And standing on that sucker, the whole road shaking, you think it's gonna leave at any minute. Then you get a little excited.
I can imagine.
Full pipe.
Full pipe.
I was wanting to try to clean the beavers out down Burger Road, that second bridge. They were in there and I went down and I had to ask them to come in and dig out the beaver dam. Cause they, they had it dammed up pretty good, well, four feet from the top, where it dug it out. I saw a beaver come out of hell and he left. And never came back. I think the water was so current that he just.
Well, that's something I guess in the spring we'll have to. The people are gonna have to get together and come in, but I.
I asked Jim to come to the meeting, but apparently they need time.
My thought is, it's, it's gonna have to go back to an open ditch.
But like that, you gotta hold the ground down there and Barry see the water bubbling up, you know, I saw the water bubbling up. Somebody reliable for that hole, we're gonna pick that hole. I'm not going down, I'm not gonna do a thing.
No, you can't do it on somebody's lawn, that's, that's off our right of way.
You know, nothing I can do, that's what I told Jim that day, that's true.
I mean, that's, that's.
Someone proves to us that it's ours, it's, it's on their land.
That's right.
I, I can't. You know, I can't go on somebody else's land and do stuff.
No, we can't just go dig a ditch for sure. You'd like to, they put the arctic line there, you didn't get to dig it, they can deal. You're gonna up there, put a water line up there by us and anything's all well.
In no way.
Not good easily.
This doesn't affect our roads.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so that's, that's the key. If our, our roads are affected, then we need to take action.
Yeah, it ain't gonna.
If the, if our roads are not affected, then.
Water running point went down through. Coming out the other end somewhere.
It's been like that for years, I uh, there was a hole there and I would see the hole and I'd fill it in and then. Mysteriously, everything that them fill would disappear and did it again. About twenty feet up towards Donovan's, there's like a little soggy spot. There, you know, so it's leaking up there too, and you know, I, I planted stuff there and everything died, so. You know, it was still there, so it never did anything like it did um, just recently.
I think the water was high. Water was high, had to come out somewhere to come out easiest point.
So it's really not gonna do nothing unless, unless it gets out of control like it did. But that was extraordinary rain. So it's really not doing nothing, I, I gotta deal with a little hole there that I can't fill in.
And probably wouldn't, it probably wouldn't do much if the pond wasn't holding it back. If it could get away down there, but when the pond becomes full and it's running over the dam, it's gonna back everything up. And that's what's gonna create the pressure.
Yeah, and I think that's what happened.
The Facebook people. There was a hundred cheers for that, a hundred cheers.
It was a perfect storm.
They love that video.
I told you nineteen years old when they did that.
Wow.
He sits in on that stuff.
Fifty years ago.
I'm just, you know, I, I, he looked at me the other day and I answered that. He had the integral, what, what I wanna know.
What else you got?
It's Scotty. I'm like, I gotta.
Or is he, what'd he say?
I'm gonna put on a tube.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry. I'm gonna go get it.
Got your mumble, I didn't know what it was.
I was ready to say hoop, don't see the hour, we gotta go get it.
Be right back.
I'm tired, but I ain't that tired. Well, Scotty, I, I got her.
Is that mop or what is it?
I don't know, I didn't take it out, play with it, I didn't unroll it. All I know is this thing here was stuck into the pipe. It's in the bag and it had them in touch. Almost could be a wash, wash mitt for.
It does look like it, it's stringy.
It's a mop, these are the mop.
I can uh, get a better take on that.
I'm gonna shut it the last time.
Yeah, that's my, I talked to my attorney, he said that he don't care what it is.
Oh, no, but I told him with you.
I don't even have a mop like that, she was in a stupid miracle, or you on TV and shit, you know? Yeah, he, my attorney, he said he didn't give a crap if it was a fricking moose stuck down there, cause he said, this is what he told me. Don't come here and argue, fight you guys back and forth, saying it's gonna get you nowhere, either, either people.
That's right.
Scott, how, over the year, how many years you lived there, I said twenty three, twenty four years. He said, how many times has that been worked on? Many times over the years, because you, like he said, you've gotta prove that I did it. He said, over the years, people have been, and I think some could have dropped in, who knows who did what. He said, so this is what he told me, if you guys wanna keep pursuing this, send me a certified letter to me, say you wanna pursue it, and we'll go from there. And he said, there's no sense going back and forth fighting, you know, he says.
Right, I mean, that's what it's come down.
Yeah.
You're saying you didn't do it, and I know we didn't do it, I mean, I didn't.
That's what he said, he said, you know, who knows, but he said, he said, people, and I had that whole for years, he said, if this goes accord, it'll get thrown out of court. That's what he told me, he just laughed about it, he said, this is one of those things that happen, Scott, and he said, that's what you tell them? If you guys wanna pursue it, send me a certified letter, we'll go from there. Instead of fighting back and forth and, yeah.
That's why we asked you to come tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, you know, my wife's like, she's bawling about it, and I said, she goes, I don't use that type of tricks, use those frigging.
You asked me for it?
Yeah, I'm glad you did that, yeah, yeah.
The little girl, threatening half a day trying to fight it.
Yeah, I don't wanna fight with you and him and.
It's gonna hurt me.
We're not, we're, we're not. We're not fighting. We're discussing.
Yeah.
Fighting is when you start poking people, and we don't poke people.
Yeah, or playing, yeah.
So what do you wanna do?
Not much we can do, is there?
He says he didn't do it.
Come to some sort of an agreement.
What's, what did it cost to replace things? What's the total bill?
Then I, this is another thing too, I had a guy from. They would do a big plumbing and the new sources, and he found a couple of issues that if I weren't even wanna cause a stink, it costs you guys a lot of money. He goes, is there a thermal overload in that unit, this thing should have never burnt out, does that? But he says there's a thermal overload on it, when a kid had kicked it out, and he said they doing this all the time.
But you went out and put the reset there, you said everything was working.
No, I.
You told me that the motor.
I, no, it, it was buzzing, I told you, there's nothing they could do, remember it was buzzing? I said that it was this one, so I didn't touch it, so. And he said, there should be a thermal overload on that, that should have never put the motor out. And that's what he told me, that's, this guy's from, I'm trying to think of it, it's a big corporation out in Burlington, they got friends of mine. And they checked it and they go, this thing's not set up right, and they said, when the sewer pumps, if I wanna cause a stink, that's what they said. Where it pumps up into the pipe up there, it's not up to code, that's what they said. I don't wanna cause a problem, I don't wanna make you guys fix things or anything like that. Yeah, back, back, he said, back when it was done, but he said, if I, if this causes me a stink, he said, then you can do that. And I said, I don't wanna cause any stink, I just wanna end it.
Be easy to do.
Well, it should have been put in up to code.
When it was put in, you know, he said, I could, like he said, don't make that back for, well, you can tell them to fix it, cause it's gonna happen again, so he said.
They can't back.
They can backflow.
I don't know. Yeah, yeah, but he said it's not the right height, it's not the code.
He looked at it?
Yes, on my lawn over here, where the drops down in.
He opened the manhole?
Yeah.
Not supposed to do that.
Well, you did. So I'm sorry about that.
Could be charge of trespassing.
I told him, hold on, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, you're not supposed to do that.
I didn't know that, it's just.
Yeah, I told you at the last meeting.
No, that's the building thing.
Yeah, but it's all the same.
So anyway.
No, don't, we're not gonna get.
What, what do you wanna do? What was the bill?
What was the?
Nineteen hundred, right, nineteen, I don't know.
Yeah, but the pump. That ain't counting all the.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, I, I really don't have to figure it, I, they ain't got all the bills.
Yeah, we have to go back.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to go back along, right?
That cord, I mean, the system has been upgraded.
I had Johnny here for I don't know how many days.
Listen, that's what he told me, if I pay anything, then I open myself up to the next one, that's what he told me, if I pay anything, I open myself up to the next one. So he told me, he said, you cannot do that, so, cause then. Then you're admitting guilt.
So you're telling us here that even whatever we come up with, you're not willing to pay anything?
Uh, yeah, I can't, he's.
Is that what you're telling us? You're not willing to pay anything?
I, I didn't do it.
Is that what you're willing, is that what you're saying?
That's what I have to say.
And we're not, we're not saying that you did it.
Yeah.
Where it is your pump on your system.
Yeah, I know that. And I said, don't argue about what.
It's nobody else's on it, but you.
Like I said, people had it out of that for years.
I was just thinking like ten percent, you know.
How much is ten percent? That was nineteen hundred? I'll do a hundred and fifty. I'll do a hundred and fifty, that's opening, I'm not supposed to do.
I don't care, I don't have a problem with that.
Why would me, I'd be happy with that.
Are you in agreement?
Favorite one trumpet. You know, I'm not.
It is, it has been repaired, you got a new pump, you got new wiring and whatever else.
And there will be a new box this spring, but he's fucking cold this winter, he ain't gonna go down there. He ain't gonna send my boy down there, he goes, I'll hire somebody else to do it.
I'll bring you the money next week.
Okay. No problem.
Sounds good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
I can relax, I'm like.
Very hard.
But it settles, Scotty.
Yeah, have a good day, guys.
Thank you. You know, I mean, what do you do?
I don't get the answer, but I did my best.
Well, yeah, I understand that, and we asked you to, you know, keep a running total of what it was. But you get, you get to the, the hard spot in a rock or.
And we did a picture, you know, and I had five witnesses, and they came out of the bike. I couldn't have any more than.
We certainly need to put signs up there saying.
Yeah, I know.
And then we gotta do that.
But you've been told.
Well, apparently it doesn't seem to matter.
I don't, it never would.
Well, even the manhole they opened, the manhole that goes to is up the street, it's not on as long.
Somebody opened that manhole. Cut their fingers off, who's responsible for that?
Somebody gets hurt falling into a manhole.
Boy, got my freaking rotten, right, jumping down there, plugged the hole. He ain't gonna never gonna get it out.
Maybe the water and sewer board, water board or whatever, can write a letter saying.
Well, you can think, we'll get some tiny foot down there.
Shouldn't be opening up, and we need some trespassing.
I gotta keep showing Ike a ball and I think.
Is there a lock on there or anything? It's really don't, shouldn't have one anyway, cause if you needed to send somebody down, you'd have to be there with a key.
It's hard to keep track of all that.
Oh, I know, it is, it is, it gets to be too much.
I'll do something in here.
Nah, it just, it just makes it difficult, you have something like that come through the pump.
We own water and sewer?
Yes.
We got a problem with an arsenic. Tank up there, one of my vessels just sprung a pinhole leak.
In the tank?
One of them ceramic tanks.
Vessel, that guy's.
A vessel, yeah.
Vessel?
Yeah.
As they call it.
You can see the little dinky. I got some spray stuff at home, it's supposed to spray onto it, it'll stop the leak. That stuff works pretty darn good. My, my son patched a hole in his pool like that. Yep, yep.
That's under some serious pressure, yeah.
But I got some of that tape there, when they do it underwater. They go, they take a boat together.
Yeah, but this is pushing out.
Yeah, but they, they showed that, I wanna recreate.
Say it's supposed to do it.
Good, that's good, thank you.
We still need to do something.
Can you release the pressure on that for a, a bit until while he pushes?
It releases the pressure when it.
Okay.
Drains after.
That's the time to do it.
Is there any warranty on that stuff when we get it?
It's out of warranty.
Of course it is.
Of course it is.
I talked to Adage, um, which of course they're coming to do our other system in April. He said, love to fix it for us, he's supposed to be getting me numbers. But their laborers just automatically charges us for a full day, which is nine hundred and fifty bucks. And then the vessel, and then do. We take that old media and put it in, or do.
Or change the.
Or do we contact a local plumber and see what we can get a vessel for and do it ourselves, or. Slap something on there so it stops leaking.
Put something on there so it stops leaking.
Quick fix is to try and get it stopped leaking. The other fix is, I think we should check with a local plumber and see if any of them.
Yeah, I've been.
And what they would have for prices.
Granite group maybe.
Well, we'd check with Nettos or Fred's and.
Is, is the media in there anywhere close to being changed time wise?
We just changed it last spring.
That's what, yeah, cause it's what, three years?
But my question, I'm not entirely sure how we would take out the used media. And without, cause you gotta basically suck it out.
Right. What was the outfit one that we had do that with that back truck?
Hardigans, but that ruins it, you know, they sucked it into a sewer truck.
Cause they're getting rid of it.
Yes, yes. Yes.
What about them to fix the vessel?
Who?
Hardigans?
They just.
They just do that backdrop, okay, I, I was just a question. My job, question is what caused the leak? Now, it's fiberglass vessel, there's no corrosion, there occurs on fiberglass. So, was it impacted from the outside accidentally? No, no, I mean, in the shipping?
When they pressurized, especially when, when we initially started it up, when we had a lot of water up there. They pressurized, you know, you, you, the water, you can, and it's ceramic.
So there is a, in other words, a defect in material and or workmanship, where it's a thin spot.
That's possible.
Yeah, I mean, someone's gotta tell me how a fiberglass ceramic tank springs a leak. I either.
In the middle of it.
Right, it's either damaged from the outside.
And it's not.
Right, or it was manufactured improperly, and the expansion contraction has caused it a weak spot and. So if that's the case, it's gonna get worse, the expansion contraction is gonna make that thing get worse.
Right now, it's, it's really not affecting anything, it makes the floor a little less spot.
I tried some of my tape, yeah, I get that night tape.
I understand, we'll do a long term fix.
Well, and my concern with tape is, that's public drinking water. We just wanna put an adhesive on it, I don't know, when the state comes and inspects it, they will approve.
That, it's a temporary fix.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Because I would almost think it could have fiberglass. Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, it's good refiberglass. Depending on what's on the inside. And is it a ceramic tank on the inside that has been fractured? And the fiberglass shell on the outside. But you really can't get in there to tell. You'd never be able.
But I was curious what's down inside of there.
Could you have a conversation with Adage?
Yeah, the guy's pretty good.
Relative to work, I mean, we've been, we seemed to have, I had a good relationship with them.
This fellow was somebody I'd never talked to, I sent him pictures, I took a bunch of pictures of it and sent him that picture and showed you and. He got them, emailed me, he's gonna work up some numbers and get back because, you know.
If we could just find out, you know, has he had any other failures like this? And is there, is it, it's a string of it, is it a defect in material and or workmanship? You know, building those things. Curious to know how thick that tank is. And is it gonna happen again? Is this something we need to plan for? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I will ask them questions.
I'm concerned that if it's a tank in, in, inside of a tank, inside of the fiberglass. Then that may be pressurized.
If you have a ceramic inside liner, you want something that's gonna protect that, like a thermos that you go get your coffee.
It, it is supposed to be good for a hundred and fifty PSI, I don't believe it's ever come anywhere near that.
So, what caused it? And we gotta get a new one, we gotta get a new one. It's gonna be cheaper to buy it from Adage than it is for Fred's. Put a patch on it and even like a rubber band or.
My concern is if they're coming and for this one, and if we're gonna have them do it, we wanna get it lined up.
Right, exactly.
So it's gonna work because I don't, I, I don't know if we can scoop that media out to reuse it, I don't, cause it's.
Good question for Adage.
Yes. Well, if you've had sanitized.
Like a local plumber to give us the price to.
I would like to start working with Netto's.
Just to see.
Chris is local and he's supposed to be one of the best plumbers around.
You know, and.
I'm sure what you get.
He does a lot of work around the area.
And, you know, I think the plumbing industry is getting into that because there's so, getting to be so much of it. So, you know, prices might be a lot cheaper. Fred, you can throw that away.
I didn't wanna throw it her bucket, have a stinking bank.
We're done. Put that in your archives that you can keep when you retire and you.
I got garbage I gotta bring up after the meeting right now.
Linda, go get it, what's up Jerry?
My wife would appreciate it.
Now I just, I would.
Sewer system, water system, everything's.
It's the only thing I had, water's been really good.
That filter, I gotta get all the rain, cause I haven't heard a thing or nothing.
Denise did say the water bill was a little high at the reservoir, which, I don't know, it's cause of extra cold, we added a heat tape.
On the electric bill?
She said it was up a little bit, or, I don't know, a couple hundred bucks.
Did you pump more?
I have, cause I've left it, the ductless well pump all night a few times, when it's really cold, to, to save headaches. Well, it's just, it's, when it's twenty blowout there, it's hard on my fingers.
Yeah, well, it probably is better to keep it running.
It's been a good well, I have not sucked it dry. We don't want, no. Yes, the box is supposed to.
But has the usage been up as far as water?
I think we were very close the last two months, I, I do have the numbers, but it's hard to tell with how much.
I didn't know with the cold, you know, people were leaving it running, I just, just asking.
It, it's hard, the sewer number is ever, always pretty steady, and the water numbers, depends on the ductless well, what it gives us. You know, we don't know.
There's a little frost that's going in the ground quite a ways.
And there are days when we pump a lot, and there are days when we don't pump a lot. And I do believe, yes, we got some faucets running.
Oh, yeah. I think we do, that's why I just didn't wonder if, if the usage. Anything else? Anything else, Fred? I haven't met, yeah, I did meet Dan. I did, he was Christmas time. Have you, have you guys both met Dan? Well, God, Fred sent me with him to educate him. Either he educated me or I educated.
He couldn't drive the truck, so I had to have a chauffeur and he went, and then, and that really helped him a lot though. You know, he watched you and he, he learned how to do things.
Fred, don't give me a compliment, I'll feel that.
I didn't have time, I couldn't take it with me, and then, you know.
It was all his fault.
I know, and I ain't give that one up yet.
I figured I'd stir that up. School is asking us to. Snowblow the sidewalk. And he bought a snowblower, and we kinda did that. So I just wondered, which one of you guys wanna get before. There's a lot of.
Somebody can send it.
No, I, we, we know that.
I know, we've been through that, but.
I'm a snowblower. And if you don't deal with that snow prior to people stepping on it, or driving on it, or. Plow truck from the state blowing it, a snowblower just rides up on top and doesn't do anything. You need, so somebody needs to get there at three thirty, three o'clock in the morning, clean that sidewalk and keep it clean while. Well, the, so, the thing of it is, a snowblower will do only so much, so you're gonna need actually two rigs. You're gonna need a snowblower and something with a blade to cut it. At times, you know, you're gonna need both, and it just, it's, it's gonna get very expensive.
Cause I had a snowblower two once, I didn't, it was only one winter and I sold it. I didn't have time to go home at nine o'clock at night.
Just from my experience watching them in the city, they have snowblowers.
Yes, I do.
But ninety percent of their usage is the plow, that cleans their sidewalks, ninety percent of it is the plow, because. Like Steve said, even with the bigger machine with a snowblower on it, it rides up on top and it's not cleaning it, so now you gotta come along with a plow and get rid of it. But you can take a snowblower and stack cement blocks on it, so. And it will hold it down to do it, but then it's hard to pick it up and move it around. But that's not good. And when a cement block falls off in the front of it. Just ask me.
So are we on to this, because I've unfinished my business, are we talking about that?
Yeah, we're just, I wanted to find out from the road crew, and, and they share our same concerns of liability with sanding and something.
We, we don't have anything small enough to go down the sidewalk and sand, right?
Not destroy everybody's lawn.
Well, then, I'm.
You know, we could go down there.
Yeah, no, 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 I.
Where you gonna blow it, you gonna blow it into a state highway, or you gonna blow it into some people's front doorstep?
So that's a city of Newport thing, we just chuck it back and forth. That's what they do. Eventually it disappears somewhere. It wears out.
Gets enough salt mixed in it, that's.
But you can dig it off, but then you gotta pick it up, you can just take it and blow it back to you.
Did you remember that when your, uh, cleanup guy comes that we were. Remembered to ask him about. But, I mean, if you guys. What he gave us for price for doing it. If you guys could think about this, it, it is a sidewalk and it is in our town. Can it be utilized somehow? I mean, I don't know.
They do have a snowblower that they got.
No, I understand that, but.
Well, they make little tractors with plows and sanders too, they, 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 there's Fairfield or Tanco, they sell. Municipal stuff to take care of.
The other thing, you know, we, we've got shut offs, and they're in the middle of the sidewalk, they're on the side of the sidewalk there, you know. And frost brings those up, and you ran into one of them, and now you've created a problem there. That makes it, it makes it difficult too, you gotta look at all these options of what could happen. Just one? But the rest of them are on the outside?
They're on the end.
Yeah. So you gotta be careful with those.
Okay, so they shouldn't be going off the sidewalk, two feet, you wouldn't think.
That's how long a wing leg up.
I mean, it would be nice. If we could keep the kids out of the street, what'd this school say, how many people?
She told, at the last meeting, they said sixteen kids walk.
I'm surprised with today's standards that they allow them to walk.
I don't, we pay a lot for messing.
You go around the street, I'm surprised that they even walk.
So they come here and then go up man's hill?
I do not know that.
The only ones that come from up here, I believe, go straight across Murphy's Long.
Pretty sure.
With the big box, she comes a little her way, and it goes right up east to the Ample, and comes back down around.
But the kids, I, one of the kids I see walking generally just go across Murphy's Long.
Oh, we did, when I was a kid, that's where we went.
I don't know who walks down the main road.
Well, the high school's set here, and part of the grade school, and the rest of the grade school is the town hall and Hot Lunch. And everybody went from here to Hot Lunch and they went across Murphy's.
Yep, you go down there, go down up there.
Everybody from here that went, because Hot Lunch was down there, everybody from the high school up here or grade school went down there for lunch. I think if everybody's working on it, thinking about it, that we could somehow come to a conclusion, doing something somehow. Whether it is doing away with that. Utilizing something else somewhere, I don't know where these kids going down the sidewalk are going. You know, if we could find out where they're headed, do they have to go to the corner, or they, can they do a crosswalk across Murphy's? I don't know, or maybe it's just to get to the store?
Well, you're like the daycare down here, it's not daycare no more, but there, there's some kids in there, they come out, they're going down the sidewalk.
Basically, what she's looking for right now is if we'll split the cost, there's somebody to hire to do this. I read that.
So what would you like in a minute, so that she will have an answer to that question? Are you willing to split the dollars right now? It's basically what she's looking for.
Where do we get the money from?
Who will be hiring and who ends up with his liability?
The town, the school.
No, the town.
And they resend the bill to the school and they pay half of it, or it becomes a town employee.
They use their snowblower.
You don't show up some days, you ain't gonna fuckin' snow.
Well, I guess we have to go back to them with who's, uh, the liability of this person. Right, who's paying the benefits? Who's, who's gonna pay the liability? This guy, first time guy, or is this a part time, that's why I was thinking. I think right now they got the janitor doing it, don't they? If we put it out.
No, the janitor stills the janitor.
Yeah, but he down the tool, but he don't do sidewalk, he don't do that now.
Not sidewalks, no.
I thought somebody said they were snowballing it.
Oh, really?
I haven't seen, I haven't even been down, I don't even turn, go that way, so I don't. I thought somebody said that they were already snowballing it, cause they bought a, they bought a snowblower according to this.
That's the school sidewalk. So what do you wanna put in there?
All parties are discussing it. Road commissioner, the, um.
Select board?
Select board.
We haven't come to a decision yet.
Well, you could, I mean, you could still ask who, where. And if they wanna know what.
So you, the answer to her question is, they are, she's looking if the town would hire and pay the individual. Newport Town School, and reimburse the town for half the cost, so you, you don't have any answer for her at this point?
We do not.
Do they have anybody in mind that they want to hire?
They want us to hire them.
I thought they had, Chris Hammond had talked to Mark Versi about doing.
So they have somebody in mind?
They had talked to Mark Versi, only because he does stuff for other people in town, he would be willing, he's told.
The way this reads, just the town would hire and pay the individual, Newport Town School would reimburse the town for half the cost. So in other words, we'd have to put it out to see if anybody would be interested.
Yeah, to be there.
From there, and get their insurance and everything if they need, and we'd have to tell them what we need, is snowblowed, sanded.
We have to come up with a figure, a dollar figure, or how much an hour that somebody's gonna get.
Where's that lawn mower guy, what's he doing in?
I don't think he does any.
A ski shop, him and his wife have a ski shop, I thought, it's what he told us.
They live right on the corner by the, North Troy Village Office is there.
Somebody said he bought that house in Mike Warrenville, um, over here before you turned Guantanamo.
Could be, but I know, I've, I've seen the ski shop, it's right there in North Troy. I know, I saw him there.
That is ski shop?
I believe so, right there at the four corners. Before you go to the customs.
Yeah, the old, uh, gift shop there, yeah, yeah.
I think.
So do you wanna put it up to bed, or are you?
Oh, no, we're discussing it, we haven't done anything to put it up to bed.
I know.
Really, then you're gonna go.
So this will be further discussed at the next meeting?
I would hate to be the one that goes out there right now and tries to do it, with, with, like you say, the shut offs are there, and it's like. Not knowing what's on the ground, somebody gotta look and see what's on the ground first.
The way it's froze.
Oh, no.
There's more rain coming, tomorrow.
Nothing's gonna happen this year, now until we get.
Well, and what, you, you do something like that, you gotta start right from the beginning, and, and.
Keep it open.
Keep it open, yeah. Got to be.
Once it's backed down, it's there. Like, there's things in my life that I try not to get, okay, that's one of them. Costs me a lot of money.
I'm sure it is.
I heard about that one.
The what?
That stone you got, you picked up in the road there or whatever. You weren't happy with that either.
No, that's. Stones, those, they're understandable, when you do something deliberately to cause a problem.
Had a problem with the sander yesterday, day before yesterday, same thing, stone is deep. It's all it was, it fell down when he loaded the truck, it fell down between the, the headboard and the sander, and then sander turned backwards. Thank God, we, we had it ready for the start.
And a lot of swearing.
And a lot of swearing.
Did that help?
You don't hear yourself when you're doing that.
And you know, shear pins are made for a reason.
The sander don't have one.
Unless it's been replaced with three eighths bolt.
I've done that too, but not on this top. Hydraulic, is that hydraulic? It just, it just won't turn, you know, but it will get, when it's in there, then you gotta unload it and take it all out.
All right, thanks guys. Thank you.
About that contract you were looking for? I got an email for someone who thought I was the town hall, who has a, a lawn care business. I'll forward it to her, maybe you can, uh, I have nothing to do with it, she just thought I was the town hall. He's a lawn care company, looking for work from you. I just started it, I.
The guy that we hired for the lawnmower, or this is a new guy, different guy?
I don't know who he is, he, he thought I was the town hall.
Before we can ask for somebody to give us a price on doing something, we gotta, what do we want to have done?
Anyway, I'll forward it to Denise, you do whatever you want with it, I mean, they might, you might even know him, I don't, I don't know nothing, you know what I mean?
All right, those guys are.
Oh, yeah, the, you know, our annual meeting, maybe we have for the, with the state. Uh, they wanna schedule that, um, what about March eight at eight?
What day is that?
That is a Thursday, I believe. The town meeting's on March six, yeah, so it's Thursday, we got our select one meeting at night.
They coming here, we going there?
No, they'll come here.
March eight at eight?
Yeah, I told them that Rick usually works Monday and Tuesday, so we, we like to do it after town meeting, so.
And this general roads permit for twenty six hundred. Who's doing that, are we doing that?
Uh, Shane, I think will help us, we can ask them, uh, we can ask, Eric Pope and Shane will probably both be here, so we can ask them.
Okay, cause I'd have, they've been sending me emails saying that this is. Now that the permit has been finalized, that we are, everybody's got on. Yeah, it'd be nice to ask a few more questions about that.
Okay, let's, uh, I'll put a note on there.
Right, so, I mean, I haven't started the process of applying to that permit.
No, I think they're gonna help us with it, the, the state garage, I thought Shane had said that he was.
Or is that girl that comes around?
Yeah, she might do it.
With the culverts and all that stuff?
Well, so we can work on a road, remember?
Oh, yes, yes.
That's what the. I don't know. All right. I don't know if that pays her or what.
We'll be here.
You're gonna warn that? You'll let me know ahead?
Oh, yeah, I'll call you in the morning for March seven. I don't have to warn that.
I'm writing it down, but.
That's only a one day.
I get so busy and all that, I know. Any other?
No, I'll get back to you guys, I'll fax Gary's complaint over to Sarah. And tell her she's gonna respond, and so we can warn a meeting. Within ten days and all that, you know. within ten days, you know, do you guys care if the meeting is during the day or at night, or it don't matter, as long as it's not Monday or Tuesday, right?
Correct, oh, it can be Monday.
No, cause.
You don't want me here, I don't care.
No, no.
We do want you here.
Yeah, okay, so.
I was looking at myself, I don't work Mondays, but I, it still comes down.
I see, I see.
Okay.